We honor our women tonight.
Yeah.
Women tonight.
No, it's a scholarship award and um and um.
You got the family. One of the awards by name.
Yeah, I yeah, I think that they're, you know, I think they're gonna be here. And then the um the members of the Historical Society are being recognized. I don't think there's hardly anybody in that area. And then Parks and Recreation is my. But most of this, these look like high school kids. Their families have their.
Yeah. Yeah, family, she was gonna receive her award.
Now we've got a full audience tonight.
Boy, more and more than. It's interesting, when I came in and I saw the empty area, I said, there's not gonna be anybody here. We've got a full house.
The spender agreement? Insurance is never right.
It never is. It's always something.
Always wrong.
She's here today.
Should I bring it up at the meeting?
Excuse me. Yes.
Everybody get in the door right at six o'clock.
I'm gonna tell her, she's gonna be looking.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's nice to see a big crowd and we have lots of people to recognize tonight. So we do thank everybody for being here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Tharp.
Here.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, thank you very much. Today, when we do the pledge, please remain standing at the end of the pledge. We'd like to do um and if you have cell phones, please turn them off. So. So we will, we are going to be doing a moment of silence in consideration and remembrance of those legislators from Minnesota who were either killed or injured in the attack. And I hope that we use tonight as one of those times that we remember that the only way we are successful as a community is for all of us to be together, for all of us to work together, to have debate that's meaningful, that we solve our problems, and that we realize that there's not a single one of us in this room that can do it alone. So please stand for the pledge and then the moment of silence.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with, I don't think there are any changes from the way it was originally presented.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Bus- Ms. Busque, second by Ms. Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now it's time for comments from the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item? This is your time, if you wanted to speak on any items that are on the agenda tonight, this is your turn to speak. So anybody wishing to speak on any agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to the special business. We have three items tonight. We have a presentation on the educational scholarships and that will be handled by Deputy Mayor Diaz, proclamation of Parks and Recreation Month, and Ms. Dugo will be doing that proclamation, and then a presentation on the Historical Society members to give certificates to them. So Ms. Diaz, and then council, feel free to go down.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Mayor, council, esteemed members of the public, parents and students. It is such an honor to stand here today to announce that on May 19th, the city council approved the ratification of the Education Advisory Board Scholarship Committee's recommendation for 11 $1,500 educational scholarships. This year, the city was very fortunate to have a resident step up and provide a $1,500 donation specifically for a STEM award, which includes the Studies of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our Education Advisory Committee, some of which are here tonight. If you are here, please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much for your dedication and service to our students and to our community. Chair Cassius Johnson, he is not able to be here today. Vice Chair Maritza Sim is also unable to be here. I did see Ms. Patty Persicelli. Ms. Ms. Lori Kuntz and Ms. Bree Luco Savage. I would also like to acknowledge and thank our two student liaisons. If you are here, please stand and be recognized. Ms. Melissa Valdez Rodriguez, SGA president at John I. Leonard High School, I think she's enjoying summer, and Ms. Leylani Sanchez of Youth Programs, Cool Zone participant and student at LC Swain Middle School. Again, enjoying summer, I don't blame them. I would also like to take a moment to thank Education Advisory Committee representatives with over record number of applications. We had over, I think it was 33 applicants this year, and there's a small but mighty team behind the scenes that is coordinating all of those transcripts, all of those letters of recommendations, and they are Ms. Tiana Garcia, Ms. Marisee Áviles, and she never likes to have her name said, but Ms. Michelle Thompson. It is now my honor and privilege to announce the 2025 Educational Scholarship Award recipients. We do have three special designation awards this year. We are fortunate to have the family of Ms. Denise Paget to help present the Denise Paget Memorial Scholarship Award, which is presented for academ- I'm sorry, athletic excellence. If I could please have Ms. Paget's sisters join us today. So the recipient of this Denise Paget Memorial Scholarship Award for Athletic Excellence is Jaime Gail. Did I say that right? Jaime, sorry, Jamaya. And Jamaya is with John I. Leonard High School. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanna say thank you.
Now, if I could ask you to stand over here, council, I'd love to get all of us together. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to join us. Please. Our next recipient is receiving the Norman Rose Memorial Scholarship Award. This is an award given for someone who exhibits outstanding community service, and this award is going to Brianda Olgin Salas of John I. Leonard High School. Join him. Our third award is our new STEM award, again sponsored by one of our city's residents, and this is a STEM award from North Broward Preparatory School. Please congratulate Caroline Lucky. That's a good last name. Would you like to say anything? You guys, this is a great opportunity to speak in public. Our next award is going to someone in our youth programs. One of the provisions in our city's rules for these scholarships is that we do like to recognize somebody from our youth programs, and that is going to Samuel Rojas Molano of Sun Coast High School. Hey, employers are watching. And our next recipient is from John I. Leonard High School, Haria Arapi. Are you gonna take me up on speaking? Also from John I. Leonard High School, we have Joseline Santiso.
I just wanna thank the City of Green Acres and the sponsors as well, and just a big thank you to my dad who's in the crowd who came to accompany me today. He sacrificed a lot to make sure I could get everything I wanted.
And our next recipient is actually a return recipient we're honored to have back. From Palm Beach Atlantic, we have Brandon Butzenberger. Brandon, did you wanna speak? Okay, sorry. Let me just do this for you.
Thank you, I just wanna say thank you so much to the City of Green Acres and for the Education Advisory Board for this opportunity. I'm really grateful for it. Thank you all so much.
From John I. Leonard High School, I don't believe she's with us this evening, Janaya Diuhustey. We'll make sure that she receives that, she got off the hook about speaking. And from Florida Atlantic University, hoot, hoot, Elaine Rodriguez. Hello, owl.
I wanted to say thank you to the City of Green Acres for giving me this scholarship, and I also wanted to thank my parents, mainly my dad, since he's here, that without him and my mom, I wouldn't be here today.
From Palm Beach State College, he may or may not be here, I'm not sure if he did make it, we have Jose Escalante Diaz. He did make it, great. No Panthers. And you see that? Would you like to say anything?
There could be no better city to live in than the city that helps its citizens. I'm very thankful for the City of Green Acres for this opportunity, and without a shadow of a doubt, this is going to impact my life, and I will forever be thankful. Thank you.
And representing University of Florida, we have another return recipient, Ms. Perla Tavira Cruz. Prepared statement. No pressure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Perla Tavira, and I want to begin by saying how truly honored I am to receive the Green Acres Educational Scholarship. To the donors and committee, thank you for seeing potential in me, not just as a student, but as a future law and business leader. As a business major, I've always been drawn to the idea of building something from the ground up and fighting for justice with my love for law. This support helps me do just that, build a future in education, and hopefully a career that gives back just as much as I've been given today. I also want to take a moment to give a very special thank you to Ms. Suzie. Your guidance has meant more to me than you probably realize. You've been a mentor, a role model, and a living example of what it means to people strong and compassionate. As an empowered woman in leadership, you've shown me that success isn't just about reaching the top, it's about lifting others as you climb. I want to also dedicate this award to my mom, who isn't here physically, but is always with me in spirit. I also want to take, thank my sister Mariana, who has always supported me unconditionally. To everyone who's made this possible, I won't waste this opportunity. I will carry this moment with me and let it be a reminder to keep showing up, keep working hard, and keep leading with heart. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if this does not show you that the future of our city is bright, I don't know what would. Please help me congratulate once again our 2025 scholarship recipients.
So, oh my God, that's a hard act to follow, everyone. Before I begin, I would like to ask Anthony, Marisha, Alonda, Ivory, Tiana, Anna, Michelle, and Ben, if you're all here, if you could come up, because this is really about you. I love you guys, I love you guys. This is a proclamation of the City of Green Acres, Florida proclaiming July 2025 is Parks and Recreation Month, and July 18th is Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all our citizens. The City of Green Acres values the essential services that park and recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and developmental enrichment for our children, youth, adults, and our older adults, and to ensure that parks and recreational spaces are clean, safe, inclusive, and welcoming, and ready to use. This year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us of the contributions of more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time workers and volunteers who maintain our parks closest to our homes. Therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of Green Acres, do hereby proclaim July 25 as Parks and Recreation Month, and July 18th is Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. And I really wanna thank you, you work so hard, we love our parks, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager, members of the audience, and city staff. We can't do, obviously, what we do without all of your support, and I'm gonna introduce the staff in a minute, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about what we do, but when we come up and take a picture, I really need any other representatives from the departments to come on up and do that as well, okay? So Carlos, captain, chief, we would like to see all of you up in the picture as well, because you're all part of what we do. Build Better, Play Better is really fitting for this year, because we're very excited to jump off with a Parks Master Plan. It's probably been about a 20-year in the making project, and we're going to be asking all of the community members for that input, for that plan, so you can come out and publicly comment on what you wanna see that the city's park, you know, system is gonna look like in the future, and we truly want that input and that involvement, so we urge you to do that. Tonight, I'm really proud to have my staff here, so I'm gonna take it off and let them start.
What do you think, everyone? Like Michelle said, and before, the theme is, oop, I'm sorry, I got the wrong. Got the wrong paper. But it's okay, our mission. It happens now. It is, our mission is to promote and enhance community life, leisure, and recreation by enriching the lives of residents through programs, classes, community events, organized athletic leagues, and scholarship opportunity like we experienced and we witnessed today. For us, it's very important, because not only what I mentioned here in our mission is we're building a healthy life, we are protecting our nature, environment, and that's very important, and it's not only us, it's all of us together, and we are proud of it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna, I'm the event assistant, and I'm part of the wonderful things we do here at City of Green Acres. You're all welcome to come and join a sort of July event. So the services that parks and recreation, um, parks and recreation professionals provide are essential, life-enriching services, important in building thriving communities. We are the proactive side of law enforcement for many people, and establish well-utilized wellness hub in the community, and providing meaningful experiences, advancing health outcomes while enhancing the quality of life, but we don't do it all alone.
Hello, everybody, I'm Tiana Garcia, I am the community services coordinator, and I work with our wonderful older adult program and many other things along with that. Some of the services we provide and outcomes we produce are reliant on the city, managers, mayors, and city council member support, along with effective teamwork from the following departments, administration, HR, communications, city clerk, youth programs, public works, DBSO, fire rescue, finance, development and neighborhood services, purchasing, purchasing, sorry, and IT departments, along with over 60 long-term community partners. Services we provide, health and wellness programs, meal service and nutrition education, engaging community events, social connectivity, athletic and educational scholarships, informational sessions, facility rentals, and custodial services, park monitoring, park monitoring, sorry, and public education.
Hello, my name is Anthony Adams, I'm the community service recreation supervisor at the center. In 2024, our department actually served over 86,740 patrons, and that includes both athletics, fields, and rentals, and classes, and events. We also executed over 1,900 facility rentals and 11 community events, as well as worked with 84 not-for-profit and local businesses to deliver services. We al- we also executed 240 special activities for our older adults programs, as well as CRS volunteers have contributed over 1,500 community service hours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alondra Aldana, I'm the facility rental coordinator for CRS department. If you're ever looking for a room, oh. Testing one, two, three.
Our next... Our next presentation tonight is we'd like to introduce Mr. Brett Brown, who would like to present certificates to members of the Historical Society for their service. Mr. Brown.
As a matter of fact, this award tonight is going to charter members, which in this room, there's only three of us. That's Peter Noble, Chuck Shaw, and myself. We have nine members that are still alive out of the twenty-five. So we've come quite a long journey. And us old people, before I'm on the other side, I want to recognize Peter and Chuck as being original charter members. It's taken almost two... Twenty... Let's see, twenty years. Two thousand twenty-six will be twenty years that the society was formed. And that's thanks to Sam Ferreira, Peter Noble, names you may not be familiar with, but... And Sandy Hill, meetings in the beginning. And it was all started because of Frank Melagranow. You may know that name. Frank was the one that spoke before city council and expressed the need to form a Historical Society. Now, he and Norm also volunteered at the senior lunch program, and Frank does not let up. So I'm sure Norm said, "Well, if that means that much to you, you should speak at city council." So Sam, Mayor, Sam turned to Norm and said, "Why don't you see if you can be the liaison for the Historical Society?" So we appreciate all of them and all of our members. I have heard back from some members. Yes. Oh, I have to finish, sorry.
Next item. Senator, we have item number four-three-seven. Is there motion to approve or...
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugo, second by Mr. Parks, and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-four, second reading, omitting the code of ordinances at Article One in general, Article Three District Regulations, and Article Four Supplemental District Regulations, all of Chapter Sixteen zoning regulations to add and revise definitions related to live entertainment, clarify the standards and criteria associated with live entertainment permits and mobile food dispensing vehicles, and clarify our permitted uses and for other purposes provided for repeal of conflicting ordinances, provided for severability, and provided for inclusion in the code.
At this time, I would like to just turn over to our Deputy Mayor to do something different. She was so involved in this, which is important. I'd like to look for her for a few moments because she has made a statement, and we can take this through the staff representation.
Oh, boy.
And... It's an undertaking, but...
Thank you. Do you have a cheat sheet?
Not that she's surprised, that was going to happen anyway, but yeah.
The... That second part I was. I might need those cheat sheets you've got over there. Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to start by making a brief statement. I want to start with by sincerely thanking my city council colleagues for recognizing the importance of collaboration and representation in our work together. It's through respectful dialogue and shared purpose that we can serve our community effectively, and I am grateful for your willingness to engage openly as we navigated the proposed changes to this live entertainment ordinance. I'm deeply appreciative of the many business owners and community members who reached out to me during this process, as well as took the time to come speak before this council. Your insight, experiences, and context helped shape a broader understanding of the issue and ensured that decisions were grounded in the reality of how policies affected daily lives. Our local businesses are more than just storefronts. They are the heartbeat of our economy. They create jobs, invest in our neighborhoods, source goods and services locally, and bring a unique energy that defines the character and the vitality of our city. When we support their success, we invest in economic strength and future of our entire community. Without the assistance of City Manager McHugh, Ms. Denise Malone, and the Development and Neighborhood Services staff, the changes before you would not have come to fruition. I am profoundly grateful to all of you for taking the time to meet and to discuss the concerns that my community had with the initial draft of this ordinance. Your willingness to go through the ordinance piece by piece, talking through each concern, responding to feedback, and collaborating with me reflect the spirit of partnership that is vital in public service. Thank you as well to our city's Fire Marshal and Assistant Fire Marshal, who took the time to meet with business owners to answer their questions. This level of engagement allowed us to arrive at a solution that both ensures important safety matters are properly addressed and that business operations for our local restaurants are not unnecessarily hindered. Sometimes, we all just need to take a step back and ask ourselves, "Why are we doing this? What is the goal, and who does it serve?" That pause for reflection can take all the difference, can make all the difference in creating thoughtful, balanced policy. Thank you to everyone who played a role in this process. This is how government is supposed to work, through transparency, dialogue, and a shared commitment to doing what's right for the people we serve. And when it does, everyone benefits. So thank you. I believe it's a public hearing, so we need to have our clerk read...
No, presentation.
Oh, presentation first. Thank you. You're having fun here, Mayor. If we could please have the presentation from the staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. So as mentioned, this is the second reading of the Live Entertainment Ordinance. The language in front of you all is in double strike-through and double underline for any of the changes that have been made since the first reading. So on April second, the city council did approve it on first reading with the intention for us to hold that community workshop, which was held May ninth. And since then, the revisions were made, refining the live entertainment definition, as you see before you, removing the term nightclub from the code as it's covered otherwise, and also removing the requirement for the charity bond. Otherwise, it is still the language to revise and add the definitions related to live entertainment under Article One in general, and to clarify the permitted uses that are allowed in those districts, and clarify the standards associated with the live entertainment permit. Otherwise, that is the main changes since the first reading. Otherwise, the language is the same as presented initially. Staff does recommend approval as it meets the code criteria and the state statute findings. It was, as mentioned, approved on first reading, and the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing for Ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-four. So anyone wanting to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak against the ordinance, please come forward. Public hearing is now closed. Council, if there's any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Dugo, and do we have a second? And a second from Ms. Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Can we read it?
Yeah, this is welcome. So our next item is a update and...
Thanks for the invitation. Can you hear me okay, above the static? I'll use my playground voice. I can get all the way across the playground. So for the record, Kim Delaney from Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Thanks for the opportunity to come back before the board. Tonight's action is to consider the adoption of the Safety Action Plan that we've been working on with the city for the last year or so. I have a very brief overview, slightly different than the presentation the council saw previously, but for the benefit of the public, covers the main ideas behind the plan. Have that as part of the record as you make your consideration for tonight. And so with that, a Safety Action Plan is a plan that has been envisioned by the U.S. DOT as a planning process and a document to help communities like Green Acres look at their roadway networks, their transportation networks, and identify ways in which we can do our best in eliminating or reducing the number of serious accidents and fatalities, and make the roadway network safer and more sustainable. That's kind of the broad brush reasoning behind a Safety Action Plan. And why a Safety Action Plan is important for Green Acres, I think, is really evidenced well by this slide that includes a map of where the crashes are happening on your transportation network. Essentially, all of the major intersections are seeing crashes at a rate of five or more in the last five years, and those are considered high-crash intersections. Overall, the city has about fifteen hundred crashes a year, on average, taking place on the transportation network. So that's a hundred twenty crashes a month. That's a big number. And so this plan is designed to make the network, again, as safe as possible for all of the users, all the members of the traveling public, whether you're in a vehicle or not in a vehicle, on a bike, on foot, pushing a stroller, in a wheelchair, riding a scooter, accessing transit, or whatever mode you're using on the transportation network. The City of Green Acres, of course, has a really wonderful central location in Palm Beach County. But along with that comes a challenge with being centrally located and being the recipient of a lot of commuter traffic in the morning and afternoon rush hours. This map illustrates the main roads that are really carrying commuters mostly through the city, but not necessarily through the city. And that high-speed, high-volume set of corridors causes a lot of conflict with people that are living in the city or working in the city and just trying to get around. And that really contributes to that high crash rate that we see looking at the data. There's been a lot of public engagement activity taking place to help inform the plan. And so this slide illustrates some of those public engagement activities. We most recently had a presentation opportunity with the Planning and Zoning Board. I know members of the board are here tonight, and got very positive feedback from them, as well as positive feedback in the workshops that we've held with your staff, with the public, extensive dialogue with the board just a couple weeks ago. And all that input has been considered into the plan that you have for consideration tonight. Just an overview of the plan and for the benefit of members, to members of the public, the plan is available on the city's website. Pardon me. Just an image of kind of what the plan looks like and the table of contents. There's an executive summary. There's some background detail that covers the kinds of trends and demographics that relate to the city that really make the city a little different than others. We're younger as a city. We have many more school-aged children, on average, and younger school-aged children, which really contributes to a larger volume of kids that are vulnerable on the transportation network. Really underscores the rationale behind a Safety Action Plan. The plan includes a catalog of improvements that details different types of things you might consider to improve the network, a methodology to analyze the network, and then a series of recommended improvements and implementation for your consideration, and just a few images to detail them. Leading with the main recommendations, there are twelve primary recommendations in the plan. They are summarized on the next three slides. Adopting the Safety Action Plan as a guidance document. Adopting both the roadway typology and the recommendation of establishing a bike, Green Acres Premium Bike Network. Two main corridors in that bike network to really get you started. The east-west corridor being Biscayne Drive, really with its connections to Woodlake and Chickasaw. Takes you all the way from east to west on what is considered a much slower set of roads with much lower traffic volume, a much safer place you'd want to direct people to ride than some of the high-speed corridors. And then the north-south corridor being Sherwood Forest Boulevard and its connection to South Fifty-seventh Avenue. And that, again, takes you all the way from north to south and east to west on Tamer Streets, initiating a set of comprehensive plan amendments and also zoning code amendments. A recommendation, the city consider establishing a Safety Action Task Force within the staff. That group has really been established. It's the working group we've been working with in developing the plan. So your staff is very knowledgeable about all the details, about how to piece things together. So it might be beneficial for the city to go ahead and rely on that group to take you through the next set of recommendations, which are going to be a little bit staff-intensive. There's a recommendation that you initiate specific transportation planning protocols with both Palm Beach County and FDOT to start to tackle some of the larger challenges that you have in the transportation network. With the county in particular, using that group to review the five-year road program the city adopts on an annual basis and being sure that it accommodates your needs as a city, as well as the larger county needs. There may be some fine-tuning necessary, leading with, for example, adjusting what happens with Sherwood Forest Boulevard as a primary recommendation. The feedback that we received from your Planning and Zoning Board would be, "Save the forest on Sherwood Forest Boulevard. Don't let the forest go away with a widening project, but instead allow that road to be adjusted as needed, but not overbuilt in a way that creates an unsafe condition or a more unsafe condition than you have today with high-speed traffic." Pardon me. With respect to FDOT or the Florida Department of Transportation, in particular, the focal roadway would be Lakworth Road, which is the major impact in the city, the state roadways, and adjusting the configuration of that road as it's improved and resurfaced. It's on schedule to be resurfaced in about six years. Plenty of time to influence that design. And DOT has already offered to meet with the city to consider the local needs for that road, as well as the larger needs. To initiate discussions with Palm Trans to accelerate the installation of transit shelters, and then adopt a series of... and then adopt a series of phased improvements that are short-term, medium-term, and long-term. And those are all detailed in the plan. And then finally, to consider a five-year funding strategy that really focuses on your ability to go after grant dollars, to bring your tax dollars home, to leverage that with city resources, both financial and administrative, to be able to improve the network as efficiently as you can, and also as quickly as possible. Just a couple of images to illustrate what those recommendations mean, leading with the key roadway improvements. Now, this map is a little different than the map the council saw two weeks ago, because there are two additional roadways that have been identified through the additional dialogue. And those are Swain Boulevard, a complete street set of improvements on Swain, and also South 57th, where that quarter lost a lot of the tree canopy, the street trees in the last hurricane. And so, your local planning agency suggested maybe put that one on the list, and let's get street trees back on that quarter, so that it can serve the role that we hope it will as a premium bike network, as a safer corridor. A couple of before-and-after pictures as to how those types of improvements, detailed in the Catalog of Improvements, might look on the ground. So, these are existing conditions. For example, on Curdy Lane on the upper left, Sherwood and Biscayne, their intersection on the bottom left, and then Jog Road on the right. This is the existing condition. We would say drivers go too fast in conditions like this. But if you make the kinds of improvements that are recommended, hopefully, you're able to communicate to drivers that they travel just the right speed instead with traffic calming, transit infrastructure, additional street trees to bring in a sense of enclosure, and better accommodations for bicycle facilities, for example, like widening the sidewalk and adding markings to the bike lanes. Another set of images like that, Haverhill Road on the top left, Bowman Street on the bottom left, and 10th Avenue North on the right side. So, these are the existing conditions. And again, what's recommended is to use that Catalog of Improvements. On the upper left on Haverhill, for example, to formalize the mid-block crossing that exists by Green Acres Christian Academy, and add some traffic calming in the center of the street. On a street like Bowman, which carries a lot of cut-through traffic between, for example, military and Haverhill, using physical interventions to require drivers to slow down instead of suggest they slow down with a sign that tells them they're going too fast is the recommendation in the plan. And on the right-hand side, 10th Avenue North really jumped out as an opportunity for some significant placemaking for the city. We took some liberties and suggested some ways that might happen. This is a large-scale, kind of aspirational idea, but one that we think captures the kind of input that we've received, to really allow 10th Avenue North to create a very different condition for the city and give you a bit of a Main Street because of its character. Last set of images, Biscayne Drive on the left and the intersection of Biscayne and Swain on the right. Again, conditions that compel drivers to really not pay attention to much that's on the shoulders, but when you add things like traffic calming and speed tables, textured crosswalks, you're able to communicate to drivers to behave in a way that better respects the people who live in the city and not just travel through the city at the speeds that they tend to travel through the city. Last two slides just cover the premium bicycle network. This is a network that we've suggested it could be called the Bike Green Acres Network. It has a series of premium bicycle routes that are identified in the green. That's about 15 miles of routes in the city. And then connectors identified in the yellow, that's about 10 miles of connectors, to take you through the city north, south, east, west, connecting to all the parks, the schools, workplaces, and other destinations. This network really prioritizes slower-speed, lower-volume streets, again, to be as safe as possible for folks that aren't driving in a car necessarily, but on another mode. And then two priority corridors to consider in that network. Really putting Sherwood Forest Boulevard at the top of that list, especially with the design plans that are currently suggested for that road, but instead really prioritizing the role that a road like Sherwood Forest and continuing to South 57th would play in your premium bicycle network. And then east-west, Biscayne Drive being the central part of that, but also, of course, including Woodlake and Chickasaw. And so, a very high overview. I know I went kind of quickly, but the board's already seen a lot of this. So, with that, certainly available for discussion. And then I think the action that's requested of the board is the adoption of the plan and then direction to staff. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing presentation once again. So, thank you. My initial comment after the last meeting to Andrew McHugh, I leaned over and I said, there's some absolutely amazing ideas in here and look forward to implementing them. As you talk about Sherwood Forest, I worked down in Delray. They just widened southwest 10th between Congress and the railroad tracks. And the increase in speed on that road, they didn't change the speed limit. They widened it significantly. And it's a 30-mile-an-hour road, and people are doing 50 and 60 now because it is so wide open. So, I agree with you on the Sherwood Forest, that widening it sounds right, great, but there's a lot of negative impacts that can come with it. So, again, thank you for all your input. I can't wait to say yes tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
All safety action.
Second.
Thank you, Kim.
Sure. Thank you very much. And then just, absolutely. So happy to have a chance to help the city with this project. And then just for the public's knowledge, there is an email address, which is safecity@greenacresfl.gov. The city established for the purpose of this plan and other safety matters. And so, I just wanted to remind the public that email address is available. Thank you so much.
I think we've ever had the audience applaud on a presentation like that. You get a few extra points on that one. Thank you so much. You know, it is refreshing to have someone present to us that's a real, clear, concise, practical project for us to consider. So, I think this really has more meaning than I think you realize the impact it will have on our cities. So, thank you very much. So, that concludes our regular agenda. We have three discussion items. The first one, meeting cancellations, and Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I thought I'd bring up a subject that we can discuss. It has been suggested over the years, and no action has ever taken place on it. It has to do with the fact that we have a very long, hot summer. And the council itself does a certain amount of work, as you're saying, but the bulk of what's provided here at these meetings is done by staff. And so, what I'm suggesting is effectively take a little break in the summertime. I'm suggesting that we not have a council meeting. And these dates are optional. We can talk about that also. But what I was thinking is that we would have the last meeting of August, that we would cancel that meeting, or suspend it, I should say. And then the first meeting in September, we would suspend that as well. So, effectively, we would have a month in between where we would be not operating. Also, what I have to bring out is that part of the suggestion only goes with the approval and consent of our city manager. We should not interfere with items that are necessary to be discussed and covered and finalized. So, we would have to include her as we talk about these dates and suggestions and whatnot, and see whether that fits in to the long-range plan that we already have. So, with that, I'd like to open it to the council to further comment on my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. Ms. McHugh, you want to discuss and give us some of your thoughts on the impact that this kind of request has, but also a little bit about the practice that you already have in place on cancellation of meetings?
Before she starts, I want to suggest that this should not be a permanent change in our policy. This should just be for this year, and then year by year, we would review our actions.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. We do actually put together, as staff, we put together an agenda that goes out several months as to what's coming down the road over the next few months, things that'll be coming up on upcoming council agendas. The only thing that I would say that would be a challenge with this is that because we are in the throes of the budget, that makes it a little difficult, a little challenging from a meeting perspective. Actually, tonight, under my comments, I was going to bring up a request to actually cancel the July 7th meeting because currently, we do not have any items on that agenda. So, that meeting, we were going to be requesting to cancel. The second meeting of July, we do have items on the agenda. We have presentations on the agenda as well. We also, at that second meeting in July, will be reviewing the 2026 budget and then also setting the millage. The millage has to be set before the end of July. Then moving on to August, the August 4th meeting, we do have items on the agenda. The second meeting in August, we do not currently have any items on the agenda. But my only concern is that usually at that second meeting in July where we do our budget review, there are times when the council does provide direction or ask questions, or they're asking for clarifying information as part of that budget presentation, that we may need to come back. And normally, we do that at that second meeting in August. So, while at this point, we do not have a second meeting in August, we do not have any items, I should say, currently on the agenda for the second meeting in August. We do have, if needed, our fiscal year 2026 budget review, depending on what comes up at that second meeting in July. And then, actually, we've advertised that based on the dates for the school board and Palm Beach County, to ensure that there is no conflict in when we do our budget hearings here at the city, our first budget meeting is currently scheduled for September the 3rd. And then our second budget hearing is scheduled for September the 17th.
Ms. McHugh, are we also, we are going to schedule some workshops on the budget? Do we do that?
We don't. Previously, we did workshops, but we just have them as regular meetings now because of the decision-making. Rather than doing a workshop, coming back, and then having a regular meeting, we just do them as regular meetings now. We have been doing for the past few years. We will do our CIPs in June. We will do our first review of the budget, the second meeting in July. And then potentially, the second meeting in August. Should you guys have any questions, we would come back and provide responses or any updates to anything that comes from that second meeting in July. And then the budget, I mean, yes, then the budget approval in September.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Just a few thoughts. I know that statutorily, that issue with the beginning of September is not, excuse me, that's not negotiable at all, is it, Ms. McHugh?
Well, it's...
There are a lot of implications because of the other agencies that have to do their budget hearings.
It doesn't necessarily have to be the beginning of September, but it just can't conflict with the school board or with Palm Beach County. And these were the dates, when we were looking at the dates for those meetings, these were the dates that we felt that, okay, made the most sense that as we're looking ahead and scheduling them. But it doesn't necessarily have to be the beginning of the month. One year, I think that we did do the meetings later. And then I think we had the threat of a hurricane, and that made it a little bit more difficult for us. So, we decided that maybe doing a little earlier in the month made more sense since there's a lot of activity in the weather in September. So, we thought maybe doing it a little bit earlier. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be at the beginning, but those were the dates that we had picked based on not ensuring that there was no conflict with the school board and with the county.
If I'm not mistaken, then on just what we anticipate after tonight's meeting, we actually will have a month now that we won't meet until middle of July because there will be no meeting on the first meeting in July. But also, it's possible that in August, you might not schedule a meeting there on the, what was it, August 16th?
August 18th. Correct. It just all depends. We didn't want to make a request to cancel that meeting at this point, not knowing what may come out of that budget review and millage-set meeting on the 21st of July. So, currently, at this point, if the council does support canceling the July 7th meeting, as we don't have anything currently on the agenda, the next meeting would be July the 21st. We would have a regular meeting. Then we would also have the budget review and the millage set August 4th. We would have a meeting at that point. We do have items on the agenda for August the 4th, but currently, we do not have items on August 18th. But we have a placeholder there in case there's follow-up needed from the July 21st meeting.
I think that kind of clarifies.
Clarify.
Any thoughts with the council? My recommendation is that we leave the schedule the way it is and leave it up to our city manager to make those decisions related to canceling meetings. It seems like it's worked well, and I think it meets the intent that Mr. Noble talked about. And I think we also realized that if anybody has to miss a meeting, that it certainly is understanding if, you know, there are conflicts that come in for anybody. So, any other discussing that? Anybody want to do anything different? I don't see any interest in that.
No, I would just agree with you. That's a good way to follow on this idea.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Noble. Our next discussion item is strategic planning. As you've heard over the last several meetings and for a while, growth in this, in our city is becoming a really major issue. I think tonight, the dynamic plan on dealing with traffic, but also the other needs that we have coming along. We need to do an update of our comp plan, which is a pretty significant effort. We have the increasing height and density issues that as we get asked by developers to do development and redevelopment of the city, we need to make some decisions because I think, quite honestly, some of our current procedures need to be revisited. That's going to take some time. And discussion on the part of the council. Economic development, we've seen some new businesses open in the city in the last two or three months that are giving some indications that we can have tremendous redevelopment. There's some interest that I've heard from our county commissioner on trying to promote and work with us on developing some major development issues that might bring annexation into the city of some areas that will allow us to grow. I think the council is aware that we've created a central county alliance of, essentially, it's Haverhill, Green Acres, Palm Springs, Lake Clark Shores, Lantana, Lakewood Beach, Haverhill, Atlantis. I think that covered all of them. But with the idea of looking at the central Palm Beach County needs for growth, but doing that in a comprehensive way, so not that all of these cities would look the same, but that we have master plans that are created that would complement each one of the cities, but also give the opportunity for significant development in this area. JFK Medical Center has a new CEO. And since he's been on board, there's been significant outreach on the part of JFK Medical Center for major, major development of high-tech, high-medical construction and services in this area. With all of these being part of our needs, but also, we heard tonight, the importance of our recreation department and the Parks Plan. And that just begins to take. I think that we need to ask our city manager to schedule a strategic planning... I think that we need to ask our city manager to schedule a strategic planning session, either one, two, three, four, 10, 20, 30 of them, whatever it's going to take, for us to have an opportunity to, the council, to come in and talk and hear from staff on what their thoughts are, what their recommendations are, but also, what are our dreams and expectations for the city. Because we are growing and we need the opportunity to have those discussions. I think it's possible that we could bring in a consultant who would, who has worked on just facilitating the meetings and do them. So, I'd like to get the feeling of the council, and if you're in the, ready to do that, is to give direction to our city manager to schedule strategic planning session at some time in the near future and give us a chance to have those discussions on how we go forward with our city. So, of course, open to any other comments from the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I am 100% in agreement with you. I think if we hesitate and do not decide to look at the future of our city in a strategic way, municipalities around us are going to continue to grow. And, you know, I feel like we're going to be left in the dust, so to speak, if we don't do something. I think our staff does an amazing job, but at the end of the day, our council needs to be invested in what our staff is recommending, and, you know, if we do bring in a consultant, what the consultants recommend are in the best interest for our strategic growth. I feel if we're not strategic about it, growth is going to happen regardless, so we might as well be on the strategic side of things. Thank you.
Mr. Noble?
A subject that, over the years, has been discussed in great depth, and I'm not quite sure where the subject disappeared to. We realize that we have very little limited land left available for development, and we discussed at length the idea of going above our current limit, which currently is three stories high building. I don't know how many feet that is now, it was 30 some odd feet. So, that's certainly one strategic meeting we should discuss. We've talked about having buildings, you know, four or five stories high with elevators that could either be commercial, on commercial lots, and/or could be residential also. So, that was never finalized. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Noble, that is one of the big issues. The other one that I didn't mention is that we've got to have some real frank discussion about how we're going to pay for all of this in the future. And that's probably going to be the most critical issue. Any other comments from the council?
I think the planning is definitely...
I see yes from everybody in that.
Yes.
All right, Ms. McHugh?
Okay.
We start tomorrow morning at 8:00.
All righty. Yep, that's right. Donuts will be served.
Nice. August 8th, it's available.
Thank you.
Our next discussion item is charitable contribution, and Kristi Gudow, our city attorney, will be talking on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. You have, that was given out tonight, and I apologize for the delay in not being in the backup, but this is a memorandum that Tanya in our office did, based on the question of can cities set up nonprofit corporations. The easy answer is yeah, pretty much so, you can set them up. The harder issue, and what we've experienced, is setting them up and then dealing with them as time goes on and maintaining them. And if you've had a chance to glance at Tanya's letter, you can see some of the bullet points she has on the second page of some of the things that we've experienced as a firm when we have local governments that set up nonprofits, some of the issues that you run into in terms of setting up your board of directors and who that is and who that isn't, deciding really the purpose of what your nonprofit's going to do, who's going to handle your day-to-day operations, and, which sometimes isn't really that too intensive, but one of the issues that we run across is your financial structure. How is that going to work with the city's own financing? Are you going to do an annual audit of it? Do you need to do an annual audit of it? These types of issues that come up, obviously, if it's commingled with city funds, or even if it's not, it may be subject to sunshine law and public records issues. Ensuring the nonprofit, how do you want to go about doing that? And different fundraising activities, which then delve into some ethics issues that we always have to be mindful of. And so, these are just some of the issues that we want you to focus on, that it's just not so simple of, hey, let's set up a nonprofit and off we're rolling. It's some of these issues that really require you, as a council, obviously, to prepare a resolution, and almost, it's like setting up another city advisory board or committee that's going to run that board or committee as your nonprofit. It's a separate legal entity, so they've got to comply with the laws related to, you know, their reporting, their taxes, and things like that. So, it's a laundry list of issues. Can it be done? Yes. Can we help you do it? Yes. But the bigger struggle that we've seen is maintaining it. I've had several of our cities come to us, and they'll be like, hey, you know, we've got this police athletic league that's a nonprofit, and it doesn't have any funds, or if it does have funds, they're kind of hidden away in a separate account, we're not really sure what to do with them anymore, we don't really have a board of directors, what do we do? Those types of issues that come up. So, it's one of those things that if you're going to start it, you really need to start it with the right reasoning and continue forward with maintaining it, just like you would with an advisory board or committee, making sure you're constantly having the quorum you need to keep it running. Otherwise, it kind of falls off, you know, everybody's radar, and becomes one of those things that years later, someone will ask their attorney, so how do we deal with this now? So, just things to think about. Like I said, we're happy to help you set one up, establish a framework for it going forward, but there are, it's not just that easy.
Thank you very much. I've had some preliminary, early conversations with James Gavrelos, who's the CEO of the Ed Foundation, and they've indicated a willingness to partner with us, to be that, they would probably be the ones who would handle a lot of the things that you talked about today and be the conduit for that and stuff. We haven't had any discussion, so truthfully, your memo helps because this will give us a chance now to go back to them and have a better and more detailed thing. So, don't be surprised if you get an invitation to join us to a meeting on that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Noble?
I have a question, and I'm under the impression that the city is a 501(c)(3). Can you confirm that?
Right. Under the IRS code, we're not a 501(c)(3) corporation, we are a local government and a political subdivision. So, what often happens is someone will come to us as the city attorney and say, hey, someone wants to make a donation to the city, do we have a tax-exempt certificate we can give to them so they can file with their tax return? And the answer to that is usually no. There is a process, if you look at the end of the memo, there's a process where you can actually go to the IRS and ask for one of these letters where they do a review of your local government to see if you truly are a political subdivision that's tax exempt, and you can get this letter. There's a fee associated with that, but they also do these free letters that you can simply call the IRS and say, hey, can you give us one of these free letters? And they'll do that for you. But really, all of it says is, your donation has been accepted by the city of Green Acres, which is a political subdivision of the state of Florida. Check with your tax consultant about whether or not you are exempt from paying taxes on this, or you get a tax credit for it. That's it. So, usually, our advice is, can tell them we are absolutely a political subdivision of the state of Florida, but they really need to talk to their tax consultant about whether they can, you know, get a tax credit or an exemption.
What you just said leads me to believe that when you get down to it, you don't really have anything in your hand that clearly states what you're giving to the city as a donation is tax-free, allows you to have a tax credit, so.
Correct.
So, I think I know what my answer is. How does that help with having a corporation of this type? Donations given to this corporation, would they be, would they provide a tax credit?
Correct. If you set up a separate nonprofit, that would be the 501(c)(3) corporation.
That would be the 501(c)(3).
That you get recognized from the IRS, then they can give you that, just like if you go to the Goodwill and give a bunch of donations, they give you that receipt that says, okay, here's your tax deductions. They can give you that. But as a city, we don't.
Can we set up a corporation just for that?
You absolutely can.
I mean, as we get down to discussing.
You absolutely can.
That would provide that to our citizens, because I know in certain areas, as people get older, like I got older, some people do not have heirs of any sort, and so, we'd like to leave to their city, that they have had very fond memories with a sizable inheritance. So, I think, you know, that would be an additional source of revenue that would be readily available and welcome on both the donors' standpoint of view and the city's point of view. Thank you.
Ms. Gudow?
We would have to establish an LLC for that, and we would have to appoint the officers of that LLC, and, you know, I kind of think that's kind of like something I'm not interested in at this time.
That was one of the reasons why we looked at the Ed Foundation, because they're already identified as a 501(c)(3) organization. So, like, and this came up with the idea of the scholarships. So, if somebody wanted to make a donation, if I wanted to make a donation to it, it would be, it would be in a scholarship fund managed by the education foundation, which would give them, give those donors those rights for claiming a tax exemption. So, anyway, it gives us a chance to start working towards that, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, that concludes our regular agenda and the comments. We go now to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on non-agenda topics? Seeing none, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just want to confirm that the council is okay with, since we don't have anything on the agenda, okay with canceling the July 7th meeting?
I think you saw everybody guess on that.
Okay. And then, just a couple of reminders, just based on when we're back here together. Again, wanted to remind everyone that our Ignite the Night is on July 4th, of course, from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. at Samuel J. Ferrari Community Park. Hoping everyone can make it out there, should be a great night. And also, our community conversation on July the 16th. The topic is going to be computer scams, how to avoid becoming a victim. That is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the community center on the 16th of July. That's all I have, Mayor.
Ms. Gudow, did you make a request for the temperature on the July 4th to be about 65 degrees?
Yes, I did. I did.
I wish.
Everybody heard that.
Still, still waiting for a reply on that, but I did.
Good answer.
Thank you very much. City attorney's report.
I don't have a report this evening, thank you.
Council, we'll start with Ms. Bousquet.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
No report, thank you, Mayor. Nothing, sir.
Mr. Noble?
It's been my experience that July 7th, July 4th, I should say, is a very cool weekend, and there have been many times that I've said, boy, it's nice and cool, it's going to be a nice, cool summer. And about three days later, you get hit with a soul chimer.
So, Mr. Noble, or Ms. Duthard?
I don't have a report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll, we have one more meeting we need to do, so we need to make a motion to adjourn, and then we'll take about a six or seven minute break and start again at 7:30 with the CIP update.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, all in favor, stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
I'm dying to eat this.